Yeah, plus I just want to go to Brooklyn. Man, Sugarland, as sweet as it gets.
It is, uh, Thursday, if you're by team. This is the day we filed a post at Regard Union Board of Trustees. Wanted to welcome everybody. I see a lot of faces coming back from Georgetown. It was a heartbreaker. Oh, it was a killer. But I just, that was by far the best soccer crowd I've ever seen. Probably the best in Alamo Heights history. It was amazing. So I just wanted to thank everybody for that. Those girls probably never played in front of a big crowd. It was as noisy as it was. It was supportive. So that was a huge try like it. And wanted to turn it over to Kevin for his delegation of recognition.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We're glad you're here. We've got a lot of folks to recognize and we're really excited that we have so many of you here tonight and so many great people that we want to honor. And we appreciate you being a part of it. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Frank Alfaro, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education. He's going to start with our basketball team.
Thank you, Doc. Around our first recognition is the Alamo Heights Boys Basketball Team. Come on down. So what a run. Final Four in state. Now, this was the seventh time in school history that the Alamo Heights Boys Basketball Team has been to the state Final Four. First time since 2012. And very special, it was in the Alamo Dome. That was awesome. And those of us that were there, right? The student crowd was so loud and you guys were feeding off that. It was such a great experience for us. I'm sure it was a great experience for you. Let's find out who's here. Tell us, uh, pass this around, tell us your name, what grade you're in, and point out any parents that might be with you. And we'll end with the old guys down there.
Hi, I'm Brandon Johnson. I'm a senior and my mom's right there with the curly hair.
Yeah.
I'm Tyler Glover. I'm also a senior and James Glover is right over there.
I'm Evan Kirkianakis. I'm a senior and my mom, Amy Kirkianakis, is right over there.
I'm a sophomore. I'm a senior and my parents are.
My name is Joe Blake. I'm a senior and my mom is next to one of the curly hair.
Hi, I'm Hugh Masano. I'm a senior and my parents are.
Hello, I'm Storm Buscher. I'm also a senior and my parents are not here.
Hi, I'm Andrew Riker. I'm a senior. Mom is right there.
I'm Tanny Smith. I'm a junior and my parents are here.
I'm Jordan Geroids. I'm a senior. My mom is sitting right there.
I'm Weston Gloss. I'm a sophomore. My dad's right there and Blue Hat.
I'm Charlie DeWitt. I'm a sophomore. My parents are home.
I'm Fullon. My parents aren't here.
My name is James Hart and I can't even know.
I'm Joe Bradley. I'm a freshman and my parents are also not here.
I'm Mason McCollum and I'm a junior and my parents are also not here.
My name is Chef. And my parents are not here.
Coach Steven Davis. My parents are not here.
Coach, I'm a freshman. My parents are home.
Um, Andrew Brewer, head boys basketball coach, and my wife and my son and my daughter are here.
So let's give us a little bit about this team and what you guys are going to run off to in a moment.
So this team, you know, this team's characterized by senior leadership. We had nine seniors on this year's team. A lot of who played together for a long, long, long time. A special group, a prideful group. And they took coaching while they were also, we're proud of them. And we've got to scoot off from here because Spurs are going to recognize us pregame tonight for game three of the Spurs game tonight.
You guys have a good time?
I think the school board needs to accompany that so many. We've got to look forward to some. Priorities here.
So as they're exiting, I'm sorry, go ahead and just let you know that every month we recognize a staff member with a Spotlight on Excellence Award. And this Spotlight on Excellence Award recognizes one of our staff members for going above and beyond the call of duty. We're going to recognize two staff members tonight. One from our March recognition and one from this month's recognition. And so our very first Spotlight on Excellence Award is for our March recognition. And I would like to call out teacher Debbie Mines from Cambridge Elementary School. Join up. So Debbie came to us about eight years ago to Cambridge as a regular classroom teacher. Here's your plaque, Debbie. You want to take that from Frank? Because I don't know if he's letting go. There you go. Take that from Frank. She was a regular classroom teacher. She taught fourth grade back then. For the last two years, she served as a, as an interventionist. And so she's being recognized actually for her work as an interventionist and how quickly she stepped into that role. So she works with some of her most at risk students in reading that. She's being recognized as one of her teammates. Who says? You want to talk about an amazing teammate that will help anyone out when people need it? She digs into research. She really shares all of her teaching tips and tools. Every student that walks into her room is greeted with a smile and she knows, every student knows that she cares about them. What is most amazing about Debbie is that she truly bridges the opportunities for students between the role of classroom teacher and the role of interventionist. We are truly thankful for her and the many ways that she goes above and beyond the call. And we salute her and we shine that spotlight on her tonight. So give her a round of applause. Debbie has been a leader, she's out there. And so we thank you for all the hard work for sharing her with us every day. Thank you so much, Debbie.
We next shine a spotlight on excellence on high school teacher Erica Guerrero. Come on down. and a leader and a catalyst for the high schools unified program which brought a national recognition. First, the state Special Olympics organization recognized Alamo Heights High School as the first unified champion school in the state, which was a big deal for all of the stuff they do. They do fight theater, they do fight track, all the things to get special education students along with typically developing students to create an atmosphere of inclusion throughout the whole school. They've been recognized for that, which caught the attention of the national, the Special Olympics of North America. When they were having their conference meeting in San Antonio in February, they all came to the school and Erica's single-handedly, but with that, she was very thankful, thanking everybody for the help, organized a visit for the special education, the Special Olympics vote for North America, the visit to high school. The band was out there, the cheerleaders was out there cheering for those folks that came in. They got to see a play put on by the Unified Theater. They got to do an unrun. They got to do lots of different things. And all of it really hinges on all the work that Erica does behind the scenes. So that's why we recognize Erica today. Shine a spotlight on her. Give her a round of applause. Erica, who is supposed to be explaining to us?
My mom is here and my stepdad James and one of my best friends and coworkers, Kirsten.
All right, next, it seems like in will be, we have a winner of the Texas Cavaliers Children Art Contest. We have a winner and a runner-up this year from Woodrow Dome and it's a mask for Piper and Nicholas to come join me with her art teacher. I want to catch my hand. We're just in the back. She has an art project that I've been working on too. So what's really unique about this award, and I'm going to make you two talk about it, and here in just a little bit, you're going to tell us about your artwork. But there are over 2,500 pieces of artwork that are submitted for this contest. And there are 11 winners that are named. And look at us. We have two of them here tonight. It's pretty impressive, right? These are some pretty talented artists. These two artists are getting thousands of dollars for their school's art program, about $3,000. Sweet Piper here is going to get to take an art class this summer at the Southwest School of Art. She's going to get an official Texas Cavalier River Parade now, right? I don't know, some good stuff from whatever, right? It gets more and more exciting every time you know, you can read this. So proud of you. Tell us a little bit about both of your artists, okay?
The theme this year was magnificent missions. So we had to do a fiesta theme mission artwork piece.
So as Piper said, it was a fiesta theme artwork. And so I thought Cascaronas. And so in six throws missions, I put some missions in a cascaron. And then I had some confetti around.
And look at you now. I love it. I wish they were here. Typically, we get to put the artwork on display for you all tonight, but I think they're already touring and taking them on display. So hopefully you'll be at the River Parade and you'll get to see that these beautiful art pieces on display. We are super proud of both of you. Would you tell us who's here with you tonight, Piper?
Oh, my mom's here. Thank you.
Piper's mom is one of our teachers at fourth grade.
My mom and my little brother are here.
Monica's like, do not hand me that microphone, but I do think we need to give her a round of applause. She's shown that year after year of art teacher at our Oregon State. So thank you for that. Thank you. Patty?
I have a surprise, Dana.
A surprise? You love surprises.
So the Texas Cavaliers and Gil Public have partnered and they are putting all of the River Art on a via bus.
Oh, how neat. So we all get to see their artwork. Okay, so we're going to look for a mission with a cascaron. And what are we going to look for for your artwork?
Um, missions with a rose color. I think we have a rose color.
Okay. We're super excited for both of you. Let's give them one final round of applause.
Our next recognition is a big group that's going to kind of get down here to Alamo Heights High School, state and national cheerleading board members. Come on down. Looks like they are basketball folks here. Hope you all want to start a little bit further down this way, because we're four of us. So I'm going to hand you the mic and pass it down, so tell us your name, what grade, and then wave out, like, give your recognition and the family members in it with you, right? We go all the way down. We'd like to end with your awesome coach, Ashley Johnson. And she's going to tell us a little bit about the awards that you've won. Right? Ready?
Yeah, let's hold our applause to the
end. And I'm going to actually run all the way down there for basketball. Ready?
Hi, my name is Maddie Holtz. I'm a junior and my parents are out of town, so my dad's babysitting.
Hi, I'm Sarah Hayne. I'm a junior and I'm Kim Malone.
Hi, I'm Julie Gully. I'm a freshman and my mom's right there.
Hi, I'm Elijah Bianco. I'm a sophomore and my parents are not here.
Hi, I'm Karsten Beppel. I'm a sophomore. I'm a all-star player.
Hi, I'm Madison West. I'm a freshman and I'm here.
Hi, I'm Brooke Corbin. I'm a freshman. I'm a freshman.
Hi, I'm Ava Anderson. I'm a sophomore and my parents are home.
Hi, I'm Claudia Wilson. I'm a freshman and my parents are home.
Hi, I'm Brooke Kirby. I'm a freshman and my parents are here.
Hi, I'm Karla. My mom's still there.
Hi, I'm Annie Ferbstein. I'm a sophomore. My parents are not here tonight.
Hi, I'm Kevla. I'm a sophomore. My parents are not here.
Hi, I'm Kendall Johnson. Kendall, uh, my parents.
Hi, I'm Scott. I'm a sophomore and my parents are not here.
Hi, I'm Elvi. I'm a junior. I sit right there. Oh, and I can't do this.
Yeah, I'll remember that.
Hi, I'm Chloe Collins. I'm a junior and my mom is right there.
Hi, I'm Kirk Groch. I'm a junior and my parents are here.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Oliver. I'm a junior. My parents are not here.
Hi, I'm Brittany Bean. I'm a junior and my parents are not here.
Hi, I'm Carol Louise and my mom's right there.
I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Raven Lane. I'm a sophomore and my parents are not here.
Hi, I'm Shelton Norrington. I'm a senior and my mom's dead or at home.
Hi, I'm Eric Rooney. I'm a senior. My parents are right there.
Hi, I'm Carly Furman. I'm a junior and my dad's right there.
I'm usually also, I'm a senior and my mom, Miss Greedy's over there.
Hi, I'm Michael Good and I'm a senior and my mom's good. Also, I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Annie Luke. I'm a senior and my mom's over by Miss Collins.
Hi, I'm Lauren Hicks. I'm a senior and I have to feel like Miss Greedy's my mom is home.
Hi, I'm, sorry.
Hi, I'm Solomon Davis. I'm a junior and my parents are not here.
Hi, I'm Faith Prushant. I'm a junior and my parents are here.
Hi, I'm Spencer Anderson. I'm a freshman and my parents are not here.
Hi, I'm Holly Hobbs. I'm a freshman and I think my mom's at home.
Hi, I'm Lexi Riz and my parents are here.
Hi, I'm Abby Good. I'm a guard. My parents are right there. I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Audrey Garcia. I'm a junior. My parents are not here.
Hi, I'm Laura Fulton. I'm a freshman and my parents are not here.
Hi, I'm Kelly Jacob. I'm a junior and all my friends' parents are here.
And I am coach Ashley Johnson. I have the pleasure of coaching all of them. And Dr. Alfaro would like me to explain what our medals are. So they went to UIL State and has been only going for three years. And they have placed every single year. This year, we were fortunate enough to win overall state champions in the game day cheer and in the fan dance. And then they were silver place medalists overall. And it's a huge honor for us because we compete over, wait, like 70 teams this year? Eighty? Okay, sorry. It's 110. And they split for 581, 582. And this is the first year they split us up. And then nationally, they were top five placement team for varsity performance team, which skills a little bit higher when they stunt and tumble. So 20 girls are on the map for that. And they were the only Texas team to place in the top five overall in the entire competition. Small varsity, medium varsity and large varsity. And then our game day team, which is all these ladies you see here have huge heartmet. They got second place and it was by a point one. Which, you know, it's in the moment, it was like, dang it, what was that? But now we look back and we, we're so grateful for even placing second and having that opportunity when most schools don't have that. And we have a great community that supports us. Ms. Guerrero is here tonight. She invites us to everything. Our sports teams, we're, we get a lot of practice time and cheering on our organizations at school and sports. So we have the best parents, I think, in the community as well. So thank you to our board and our district for always supporting us. Because without you all, we wouldn't be here.
Well, that was well said. In addition to all the hard work and the athleticism that you guys have been recognized for here tonight and all of your achievements, we also want to give you an extra thank you for, like you said, you're in all the sports, cheering on all the other teams. And we couldn't do without it. The basketball folks were here. They, they applaud you as well as the soccer folks today. So thank you so much for all you do for our school. Thank you. One last round of applause. The next recognition is for our Alamo Heights High School State Swim and Diving folks. Come on down. We have a variety of honors in front of you here today. It's a mixture of first team All-Staters, second team All-Staters, honorable mention, all city grader San Antonio recognitions, as well as the swoop of individual awards at the state level. So what I'm going to do is similarly, I'm going to hand it over. And I'm going to say this, if your parents are here, you can shout them out. If they're not here, that's fine. But I will ask you to do a couple of things, right? So tell us your name, what grade you're in. Tell us any individual awards at the state you got? And also if you're All-State, first and second team honorable mention. It's a lot. All right. And then we'll point to the old guy down there.
Hi, my name is Mijah Zavino. I'm a junior and I have honorable mention in the 400 free subliminal.
Hi, I'm Andrew Crossley. I'm a sophomore. My parents are right there. And I was all state.
Hi, I'm Sophia Carroll. I'm a freshman and I was a final delinquent All-State 500 free and 400 through subliminal.
Hi, I'm Amy Burris. My mom and dad are over there. I am a diver and I was first team All State and I got a place at state.
Hi, I'm Justin Do. I'm a junior. And I honestly don't know what we got, but we did get something. I was in Justin Do. I made a math list. I'm a sophomore and we were.
I'm McCoy Patterson. I'm a sophomore and All-State. I was a semester. I was a sophomore. All right, I am a sophomore. And I did stuff.
This is Mike Clark and I'm a junior and I'm on the first team All-State 200 free and 200 subliminal.
Hi, I'm Sophia Weiss. I was a manager.
Hi, I'm Lacey Homer. I'm a sophomore and I was All-State in the 200 free and 200 subliminal.
Hi, I'm Rowington Black. I was honorable mention All-State for the 500 free and 400 free subliminal.
Hi, I'm Kate Hal Freeman. I was honorable mention All-State for the 100 butterfly and 400 free subliminal.
Hi, I'm Lauren. I'm a senior. I was first team All-State in 200 IM, 100 breast, 200 subliminal.
A word is not the assistant coach.
Don Walker, head coach. Couple words. First of all, I'd like to thank all the parents for your assistance and your help throughout the year. And also the school board. Special thanks to Coach Rollin. Where's Coach Rollin? So thank you. So thank you, she's behind the scenes, always helping us, always supporting us for all sports, and that's very much appreciated. This group is very special, it's a very young team, over half of our kids are ninth or 10th graders, and we have a great crew coming in next year as well, so we're hoping to improve our placement at state, and the kids just feed off each other, they're a wonderful group, Lauren Ray, one of our captains, will be leaving next year, along with Justin Dickey, and everyone else at the back at the state level, so it's a very, very exciting year for us next year, so we're looking forward to it. Thanks for your support, school board.
A round of applause. Our next delegation is actually Kathy Marshall, president of the Alamo Heights High School Student Council, come on down.
Hi, I'm Kathy Marshall, and I'm the president of Student Council, and lately, what we've been doing as Student Council is we attended a convention at Clark High School, and we just looked at other Student Councils, see what we can improve on for next year, and our Student Council, and we also won our district historian officer position for the Alumni Association of Student Council, and it's a district position, and the responsibility include taking pictures at every meeting, district-wide, and putting together slideshows at the end of the year, so our Student Council is very excited to be nominated for that. And then, our Student Council also attended Arlington last weekend, and we took 14 general members, and they also found new initiatives to do at their school for next year, just to keep improving like the school sphere, and keep everyone involved at the school. And we had talent show, like two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and we decided to do a music festival theme, because we know the students love music festivals, so the student community is back, and that was a great turnout. And then, we had, oh, right now, we're doing our elections for new officer positions, so some of the cheerleaders, y'all seldom come through, and some of them are running to be officers to next year for Student Council, so you'll see new faces up here. That's all we have.
That's pretty much, from here on in, it's more business matters, so everybody's welcome to stay, but if this is probably a good time, if you'd like to leave, so give me a few seconds. Next up is items for free citizens to be heard, we didn't get any requests, but if there's anybody out there who did want to speak in front of the board, you can see your time, but you can see your hands, so we'll go to section four, it's items for presentation of possible action. The number one is the Alamo Heights High School Choir Spring Trip.
Hi.
Hi.
So the intention is, we put forward, every two years, as you know, we can go out of state, so we had a really successful trip to New York last year, which you all probably heard about, as we got snowed in, had some fun times. But, this coming year, we're planning to go back to Disney World, we've been there, this will be the third time for Heights, and with us, with me. And so, I wanted to get an earlier approval than I usually do, so that I can be sure and inform incoming freshman parents, and try to have them, help them have a more opportunity to get some more money. So, that's why we're here, and also because that guy's going somewhere out here, so I thought this is a nice time to also... Rachel's helping, as she does so much with everything, so I asked her to come, so she can enjoy meeting you all a little bit, or sing how we do this kind of thing, so that's why she's here. She said, "I don't want to talk."
You can sing.
Yeah, that works. So the trip is over Battle of Flowers weekend, at least that's my intention, using the Thursday and the Monday on either side of that weekend. And then, when we take this trip, we've done, we've done different things, we've actually performed at Epcot Center before, back in '09, that was a really good experience. But this trip, we now, I often don't know who exactly is coming on this trip, and often then might not have a choir that has the right voicing to perform. And so what we do now is we attend a professional workshop put on by the Disney group, where they bring in a producer, a performer, an accompanist, and a recording engineer, and they, we do a three-hour workshop with them, leading the workshop and teaching kids what professional singers need to do, and the kind of level of work that is required to be a professional singer. We sometimes have prepared music that they have sent me in advance, the kids then sing that music, their audio recorded, and then dropped into one of the Disney animated movies as a backup choir, replacing the original choir that was on the actual video. And so our kids get a chance often to do solos, and I get to usually do the baboon yell, things like that, it's interesting. And that's generally what we do, plus of course, enjoy the parks. This year, I'm wanting to take them not just to Disney, but take them another day over to see the Harry Potter wizardry world.
So it's gonna be amazing.
That's the plan.
Okay, that's great.
I'm investigating, being as early as I am in this, the cost is around $2,000, which is high, and so I'm working on getting other quotes, 2,125 is what you see here. I don't anticipate 65 students, what I'm planning on is closer to 40 to 45, but as you would be aware, when you propose something with an agency or something, you have to start somewhere. And I've taken, you know, a lot of people before, not 65, but I've dropped that back down, and so the cost sometimes goes up a little bit. So I'm investigating other bids, to be sure that I've got a good price, I'm going with the same company that took us to New York, they're called World Strides International, and you can see from there, one of the things I do too is, you can, I can stay at, as you would call them, cheaper hotels, onsite, all-star resort hotels are what they are, and I've done that before with our kids, but the Caribbean, Caribbean Beach Resort is just a, you know, little step up, we're not surrounded by as many kids, other high schoolers I'm saying, so that I have felt like there's a better sense of control for the kids and safety issues. And likewise, I add things, I've started adding things like our own private dessert party at Epcot for the illuminations, you know, normally you just stand around that fence and just kind of look, try to see through people, and so I've added that, so that we have our own area of fence, and we can eat ice cream and cookies, it's pretty cool, kids like to do that. And the fancy dinner, if you call eating at Hoop De Do Review, fancy, but that's, yeah, that's maybe it. So that's kind of, you know, it's all inclusive, the kids, everything's included in the trip, the airfare is included, transfer is by bus, when you're onsite, you know, you can use the shuttle system. If I'm offsite at different hotels, and I have to provide buses to and from the hotel, and that just, I've done that before too, but it's so convenient to be onsite, use their shuttle systems, and get to places quicker that way. So, that's our plan.
How many kids are in the choir program?
105.
I didn't realize there was that big.
Well, somebody over here is helping, what we're finding...
Does she want to say anything?
No, she doesn't, she can, but we had, we've grown 15 kids from last year to this year at the high school, which brought us to 105 enrollment, and then next year, our numbers are the same at the high school, whereas Rachel's numbers...
So we, this year, we were at about 80, it's junior school, that's where primarily, and this next year, we're gonna be at about 110, so we're, the junior school's growing as well, which will affect him up there.
One of the things we did intentionally this year, as Rachel and I always want to improve our programs, is we brainstormed about what can we do to increase our program. And it's hard to increase programs at the high school level, and like 7th and 8th grade, where programs have to get started and grow is at the 6th grade level. And so, we have wanted to do that for years, but this past year, Rachel and I sat down and said, "Let's do some things," and so we have done that. We've always shared a fall concert, but now I've invited her to sing on our Christmas concert, which we did this year, but I also invited our elementary choir, choirs from Woodridge, to perform. So that brought the elementary kids on campus early, then the high school choirs went and sang in the hallways at Christmas time for both elementary schools. And in addition, Rachel took some of her, I guess it was your 6th graders, wasn't it?
I took my varsity.
Oh, varsity, okay. And so she brought some kids down to both elementaries to, "Hey, we're choir," because sometimes they don't know we have one. You know, strings gets a good start, band has shiny instruments, and we just... So we really do need some of that, and that, we saw a doubling of the number of kids enrolling in 6th grade choir as a result of that single action, so we want to just keep doing that.
Y'all know when Angus came to Alamo Heights, we had one choir director over 6th through 12th grade, I think we had 19 kids in the high school choir, and not a whole lot more at the junior school, and he had had a stellar career in San Marcos before he had done that, and for him to come in and build the program to the degree that we had to add somebody at the junior school, and then build that program to high school and the junior school, the musicals, the major works, all the things that they've been doing, is really incredible. And they got sweepstakes, both groups did, and they continue to do that, and Rachel's just been this incredible breath of fresh air at the junior school, and really helped building that program, and I feel like we're really fortunate. I was at the concert at UIL this week, and got to hear him perform, and Director of Fine Arts for another school district was behind him, behind me, and also was a friend of mine in college, in the UT Band, and was just blown away, because he had been the band director here at one time, and he remembers what the choirs used to be like, and we've always had some talented musicians, but we've never been able to have really a great program, and it continues to grow, but I also want you to know, Mr. McLeod brought AP, he does AP Music Theory, and we have classical guitar, and piano, and all kinds of things that have been added to our music program over the years, which is really a pretty special deal. And so, it's a lot of fun, and the other thing, you hear the choir numbers going up, our band numbers are up too, so it's not like we're cannibalizing off of each other, which is a really, I think, important thing too, so it's a really good thing to see. Let me ask one more quick question, on the cost, because I know it is kind of an expensive trip, you've done trips in the past, it might be an impossible question to answer, do you ever get the sense that kids don't even try to raise the money from the get-go, because they're like, "That's just way too much money, I can't..."
I'm sure there are kids that do that, but we try to help as best we can, sometimes I'm able to give, I think it was on our last trip to Disney World, because I went back and looked at my expense forms, there are sometimes fundraising things that I do, where I can take $1,000 and give each kid, not each kid, but give those that need it the most, a $100 scholarship, where sometimes I have some individuals that step forward, parents or the community members, that step forward and give us a little bit of money, and we're able to do something similar, where we spread some money out to try to help families that we know need it. And frankly, certainly for our smaller trips, this year we're going to the beach, we do that most every other year, there are kiddos, Mow Ranch, when we go in the fall for a weekend retreat, there are a lot of kids that, I say I carry, our choir program carries, either from fundraising money that I have access to, and so there are kids who we very much help, either paying for their entire trip, if it's like this smaller beach trip cost, or we try to get scholarships, or we'll pay the baggage fees, you know, or we do both, to try to at least extend something to families to help. But to answer your question directly, absolutely, there are kids that, you know, that's one thing about choir, we, all of our programs, I guess, in music, have, we all have a mixture of kids, that's what's so wonderful about fine arts, isn't it? That sitting in my choir is a kid who's 10th in the class, or first in the class, or third, and they're sitting next to a kid who's struggling to even come to school every day. And they get to mix with all of those people, and that's what I love about, it's like public schools, I hear. So right there, we have this microcosm of exactly what we are doing, and so that means we've got kiddos who have that financial struggle, but we try to help them as best we can.
Are you all doing your mattress sale as a fundraiser again?
Yes, sir.
Put a plug in for anyone who needs a mattress.
And just to let you know, just today, I visited with our mattress salesman, and David Stevenson, and said, "Would you like to join us, so we can sell more mattresses?" So he's gonna jump in, and we're gonna run a sale, band and choir, keeping track of our own money will be easy, but we think we'll bring in more customers, so if we need a mattress, let me know.
That's great.
It's nothing to do with music, but it's still...
But it's a good fundraiser.
It's a great fundraiser.
And Rachel, I know you didn't want to talk, but having had kids go through all of the choir programs, before Rachel arrived, I remember going to a concert, and it was one, it, let's just say it was lacking. And now, your concerts are so incredible, but I think you do need to tell people, because they don't realize, when they say, "You did well at UIL," I mean, tell them about your, the choirs you took, especially the boys.
Oh, well, so we, the last year was the first year we'd ever taken a men's choir, like, we've never had a men's choir go to UIL at the junior school level, and so, and last year, we went, and they got twos, which, you know, they ranked from 1 to 5, 5 being the poorest, and 1 being the best, and so, twos were even better than I expected, and then this year, they got sweepstakes as well, and the varsity women have gotten their third straight sweepstakes in a row, as well, so, yeah.
I would think junior high boys singing could be really hard, I mean, like, their voices are changing, yeah, that's incredible.
You never know what you're gonna get.
You gotta go from a soprano to a, you gotta switch.
Yeah, most, you know, there's plenty of boys who most days, they can only sing just two or three notes, and so, they'll just sing those notes.
That's great.
It takes a lot of flexibility.
It was fun, Kevin got to hear, we, I had, I had, this year, in our top varsity group corral, I had only two tenor, two boys, singing tenor, both of them were ineligible. So two weeks ago, I turned to some girls and said, "Poof, you're a tenor, poof, you're a tenor." So three of them sang tenor, and so we went to contest yesterday, or the day before.
That was yesterday.
That was yesterday, gosh, and the three girl tenors said, you know, sang in concert, did the sight reading, they did it all, so here's to the girl college.
That's good.
So, good stuff.
Great job.
Okay, if there are no further questions, I have a motion to approve the 2019 Spring Trip for the choir to Orlando.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do to support our fine arts, and I want to say one thing about that, that gentleman, one of the things that's so special is, because at some point, I was supposed to retire when he did, but I'm not gonna do it, because he wasn't supposed to, but anyway. One of the things that I think is important, and I, because I know this is what he believes in, and you all do too, is, it's terribly important who sits in that chair, and I think when I do my choir thing, I'd like to think it's important, and when Rachel does, but what we're trying to do is build a program, 6 through 12, that is kid-centered and not teacher-centered. It's about the kids and the program, music for us, and I know Kevin believes that about what he does, and you all do too, and yet, we also know he's pretty important, but that's, I know that, because he can walk out and feel like, "I've got something that we've, I've built a program." He's built a program here, and you all have built an incredible program all these years, so we thank you so much for all the work you do, it's just amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the next item, I think we're moving to next month, our JRTC is coming in for an approval on a trip to DC. Right, okay. So next up is Item C, recognition and presentation of the Teacher Leadership Academy Cohort Four Updates.
All right, I'm gonna use this, because I'm gonna have our teachers share a little bit, so I'm excited to introduce you all, members of our fourth cohort of the Teacher Leadership Academy, and so I'm gonna ask Polo and Angel, just come a little closer, just kind of join, you know, maybe you have a front row, other parents, and have you share a little bit about some of your work. And you all have to pass around my business, you don't have to come front row, but I am so proud of these guys, and what they have stepped up into. Their principals have nominated them to be part of the fourth cohort, and that's a big risk-taking opportunity for them, just to participate in the Teacher Leadership Academy, but once they get in it, you know, we really challenge them to step outside their comfort center, and to have big conversations about big ideas, but also to take some action on our campus, to really impact the positive culture there. And so, again, I'm just truly proud of them, we have 28 teachers that are part of this fourth cohort, it's a crazy time of year, we know, and everyone can be here tonight, but those who are here, we are super happy that you're able to be here with us, and so we'd just like to hear a little bit about your RTO, which is our, our risk-taking opportunity. They walk alongside one of their campus administrators, or one of our central office administrators, all throughout the year, in a coaching relationship, as they commit themselves to that work. Amanda, you're way over there, can I put you on the spot first? I kind of move left to right, my left to right, did that put you out of your, way out of your comfort center, if you started itself? So you're just gonna tell us who you are, where you work, and what your, what your project was, you don't have to, just be casual. So tell us who you are, where you work, and what your project was.
Sure. Hello, everyone, I'm Amanda Pedrosa, I am a high school counselor at the high school. And my risk-taking opportunity was about the schedule change policy, so I felt that was near and dear to what we do as counselors, to some extent. I surveyed teachers, I met at department chair meetings, I met with administration, I surveyed teachers and students, and to see what was working and what wasn't working with our current schedule change policy. So I have also researched neighboring school districts in the state and out of state, just to see what best practices we're using at other school districts, and came up with a document and a policy that has also been reviewed by our administration and Dr. Arro, and so hopefully it'll be ready for implementation for next year, so we're excited, and hopefully that we'll get good feedback, and it is a working document, so we're always open to suggestions, so.
Amanda, the students, I'll put you on the spot.
You play the piano show, you're all about it, in fact, you saw that.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Gera, I work at the high school as an art teacher, and my RTO was about increasing collaboration on our campus, and also just bringing the visual arts and other arts into the forefront to create a collaborative atmosphere, but also just more campus spirit and more beauty around our campus and community, so some of the ways that I've done that is, we've increased the number of community-based art projects that my students have entered, and we have a few exciting ones that are going on right now, I have a student who's in the running at the San Antonio Airport, and the winner of the showcase display for a year, you can, you'll get some more information from our lovely Patty Beck here, about how you can vote, because this is a community-based program, so hopefully Kayla Dunn will win that competition. We have six students who are already going on city buses as part of the DLBST campaign, and then some, some other things on DLBST, we've started a Friday Arts Fest lunchtime event, so students can come and showcase their art, their visual art, or spoken word poetry, and other musical talents, anything arts-related, to show off some of the artwork that they do.
So excited, Jane is taking her microphone out.
I'm gonna get back to the bus game, so. So I'm Jen, take back world history, grade level, and AP at the high school, and first I want to say, I have so many things I wanted to do, that I, I put that for next year and the year after, I really want to look at doing a class that combines English and world history, that was a little too overwhelming, I also want to start a TED Talk type of deal, but what I ended up doing was a little more simple, but so necessary. My class is really me and the kids together, it's not me sitting at my desk and the kids doing their textbook work, so I hate it when kids have to go to IAS or to Robbins, because they need a sound on the class, so what I've started is using a thing called Google Meet, where my kids can tune in during the class period, and they don't see me, but they can hear me, you know, on the other side of the room, and they see everything that's on my computer screen, whatever, like in a movie, or PowerPoint, so they're not missing out on classwork, and it's wonderful, and I'm hoping to be able to use it next year with kids that they have like long-term sickness or something like that, so it's been really successful, I love it. And hoping to promote it next year.
I'm Caleb Byer, and I teach Oliver II Creepy and teaching at the high school. My RTO this year has been focusing on the professional development needs of teachers to better meet the needs of students, and so I've been holding AHHS Brown Guide PDs every month at lunchtime, just based on different, the first time I tweeted Tech or Treat to start it off, and then we've done, this will be the fourth one, will be May first, and we'll be doing MacBook 101, because we just got new MacBooks, so just based on the needs of teachers at that time, we survey or ask around what the needs are, and then we meet those needs with a contact query, so.
Can I go now? I'm next, so. My name is Elizabeth, I'm in the face school, I also teach ACHS World and World like Jen, she's my person there, and so I had several ups and downs, I was dealing with dual credit, and I feel like it's really something that we can offer at the high school and extend it to history, because we don't have that right now, and so I started researching, just seeing some positives and negatives, and it went from how teachers can get trained to be dual-credit teachers, and how they can implement a class, all the way down to when we looked on our high school website, what needed work, and so I worked with Amanda Pedrosa a little bit, who does dual credit also, and so we're working on things, and mine is also a work in progress, because we just went two weeks ago, and said, "This could still happen, and we can fix this." So I also realized that within even a high school, there is lack of communication, unless you actually get up and go and walk to somebody, as much as email is fantastic, and so I'm volunteering, or I did volunteer, to be like... And so I'm volunteering or I did volunteer to be like a point person in case people have questions, just I don't know where to go. I feel like that's important, so.
I'm Amy Neres. I teach fourth grade math and science here. So I worked with the counselors here. This was year two of the core essentials, which is our career education initiative here. So I worked with the librarians and the counselors to provide support to the teachers. And then I wrote a grant that was funded through the foundation to provide materials for the library and books so that teachers could check them out, to support them when we do our team panels or our class council meetings. And then they're also going to be able to check out for the students as well. It's been, it's been fun. It's pretty exciting.
My name is Apolonia Trejo. I'm a third grade Spanish merchant teacher. And this year I organized, unorganized, and reorganized our third Spanish community. I'm getting ready to actually survey the students to see how can we help them do better. So, thank you.
I'm Julie Onwell. I teach at Howard. So we were trying to come up with an authentic service learning project that parents could do for the children. So after researching, we discovered that Crayola will let you mail them dried up markers and they recycle those into fuel. So our school year, my class has taken complete ownership for this. The whole school is collecting all of their dried up markers. We go around about once every six weeks, collect them. We made it into a math project as well. This last time, they check every marker to make sure it's really dried up. Then they, we counted in groups of 25. I have four paper boxes of dried up markers in my classroom. We've collected like 2,017 markers to date. And then at the end of the year, we're going to show them on the How to Bear News, which is of course our news broadcast at Howard. And then Crayola will pay for us to send them into them. So they've really learned a lot about recycling and ownership and that authentic caring about the community. It's been a great project.
And I am Sinead Yassineur. I am a creative teacher at Cambridge, Spanish merchant. And my RTO was to create a document, a working document of cultural experiences for the district to hopefully later on align it vertically and horizontally between the elementary level and the middle.
Hello, my name is Krista Dowd. I teach technology at junior school. I was teaching Texas history beforehand, and so my project kind of tied in neatly with the fact that I have a new content area. I had two projects. One was I wanted more contact with businesses and organic, authentic projects for my kids. So they solicited businesses to create logos for them and also to do like 3D printing in their interdisciplinary classrooms. So I've led teacher lunches where I teach teachers about what the kids are learning in sixth, seventh, eighth grade with GarageBand, Photoshop, all those things. And asked them, let your kids do these more in your class, so there's more integration. My second project, this is a passion project of mine, I'm being really against grades and even grade levels, but maybe it's something weird. And so I've tried, over the last three years, I've been trying to have no tests, no quizzes, few grades as possible without mentioning the kids. And so this project this year has been more about how to have those conversations about what that looks like across other areas in our school and leading book studies and, you know, doing a lot of research on how that affects kids overall.
Fantastic, right? So we, we really pushed on this notion during that first module about the definition of what is teacher leadership and this whole, you know, phrase, I'm just a teacher, I'm not only a teacher. And you know, every time that we have visitors come from all across the state, we run these panel discussions. And we talk about the important work that we're doing in the district. And the only reason we have the momentum that we have and do the important work that we're doing and we're able to carry on year after year is because we have people like those that step up to that call and they're willing to keep the one foot in the classroom and put one foot outside the classroom door and take ownership for that important work. And so huge kudos to all of you for kind of answering that call and being willing like Krista say, okay, I've done my project, I'm going to do another. And like Jane, okay, that's what's going on and I'm going to continue doing that important work. And so year one is almost over and that's the next call that you'll hear from me is it's not over yet. It just keeps on going. There is, it just keeps going on and on. Yes, it's not over. So give them another round of applause.
I just want to say thanks to Dana and two for being, she's the one that really brought this together and has made it work so well. And, you know, we talked about culture and continuous improvement around here. And the fact that you guys have taken this on is really great and your leadership extends beyond the classroom. We really, really appreciate that. And I want to emphasize again, as being a district that's been so innovative, that starts with allowing people to tap into their own talents and creativity and develop things that really make a big difference for the district. And the, when we did our strategic plan 10 years ago, the board actually added this item as leadership development is one thing they wanted to have. So kudos to the board for adding leadership development and kudos to Dana for then taking that and developing that into this teacher leader academy.
You guys, we'll give you a few minutes unless you want to stick around, but I know you guys were working hard, so.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda is item E, presentation of 2018 showcase of engaged learning.
Well, everything you saw tonight, so exciting, but this is sort of the cherry on top because this, what we're going to talk about now is really what is going on in the district. Everything from cheerleaders tonight, we're part of showcase, you know, that love the teachers that you see are part of the showcase. So this is a little bit of, you know, the whole year looking really at a snapshot of every single thing that's going on. It's just in one night. It's just a, a whole year's worth of work, things that are going on in our classrooms. And I just want to show you a little bit about it. If you are not able to come, I have a quick little video that we'll show and so you'll feel like you're a part of it. This year, our winner was Brady Gazelle. He is a third grader at Woodbridge, I mean at Cambridge. And we were so impressed with this. You know, I have to tell you, we looked at this and we all just sat there and said, oh my goodness, is this really a third grade kid? Because this is amazing. Today, when we had the kids here that did the art, it was amazing to sit there and to say, oh, these kids are just, you know, wonderful. And I'm thinking this little third grader is going to be right there. I bet he will apply to be, you know, in some of those contests. So it was great. So I want to show you just a little bit. We, we don't do a lot of data. I know people like to hear about this and kind of, is this, how is it going? So we kind of started in 2014 when I first got here and just started kind of keeping up with what we think. Now, we do not do a head count, so you know I can't count everybody. So this just kind of helps us to know what's going on. But if you'll notice up at the top, the number of presentations, when we say the number of presentations, we ask teachers, hey, we'd like for you to present with your students. And that's basically them doing an application to say that they're going to be there. But they might do an app, they might do an application and bring two or three teachers with them. So sometimes it's hard to know exactly how many teachers. But you can see, we've kind of bounced around. We've started like 74. At one year, we got up to about 116 different teachers. But even though dropping down to 67, it might just be that more teachers are joining together. Because what we were finding is a teacher would, would be there with their students the whole time and then the kids couldn't go walk around and see what's going on. So we started asking them to join up with another class and two teachers coming and then taking half the kids. But look at the second row, which is the number of students. You can see that we are making a big difference in how many kids are actually participating. And we basically go by T-shirt orders. So that helps us since we don't count how many kids are coming. But that does not include our Spurs dance team that was dancing. The girls had their own outfits on. Cheer wore their cheer outfits and band, they don't, they wore their band T-shirts. So I can't even tell you how many kids, if you include all those, how many we had. I'd say, you know, almost, I don't know, 1,500 maybe, 1,600 kids participate. So that's been a lot of fun. If you'll go to the next slide, Emma. This is just a little bit about, you know, just kind of snapshots. We, you can't really get to everything in an hour and a half. I hope you were able to come by and see some stuff, but it's almost impossible to see everything. We feel like we want the night to be just a big celebration. We want it to be loud. We want it to be interactive. Our whole goal is that the students are doing the leading and the talking and the teachers are kind of stepping back and letting the kids step up. You know that we had food trucks, which is wonderful. They've been just a, a great addition. We added that a few years ago. It just makes the front lawn a fun place to sit and eat and have the music. And it's just really, you know, kind of a community night. One of the things that we did that we got some feedback on is that we do not do the program in Spanish. And so next year, that's one of the goals, is to go ahead and have Spanish programs as well. And we also have them online. A lot of people like to do things online and have it on their phone and not do paper. So we're excited about that. All right, so I'm going to show you just a brief little video that's just going to give you a little snapshot of the night. I walked around and I saw many of you there, so I do appreciate your support. I think all of our teachers, whether they present or not, I think our teachers really need to be a part of this. They need to see what's going on. We've had people come back and even tell us things like, we really would love to see, you know, each school do their own. And we've had a lot of conversation about whether or not that's a good thing or not because if you, if you isolate each school, the parents and the students never really get to see what other schools are doing and never get to see what's going to happen when they're older. And you have these little kids going in and seeing, you know, forensic science and robotics and things as kindergarteners, seeing that in the high school. So that's what you're about to see, is just the whole community coming together, the community of Alamo Heights, the community, and then the community of Alamo Heights ISD coming together.
We are coming to you live from the showcase of engaged learning here at Alamo Heights High School tonight, featuring demonstrations of engaged learning from Howard to Alamo Heights High School, Alamo Heights Junior School, Woodbridge and Cambridge. We're out in the courtyard right now, getting a look at all the different options that are available from 6:00 to 7:30 tonight. Hey, and even we have to cook, there's food trucks. Come out, join us. We'll be bringing you more in just a bit.
Hey, this is Krista Dowd at the Alamo Heights Showcase on engagement. So I want to show you a little about what we've been doing here. I'm here with my good buddy, Hobbie. Say hi, Hobbie.
Hi.
So Hobbie's going to explain to you as why, what we've been working on. So here we are in middle school technology classes. The kids have a lot of different opportunities to do different types of projects.
Okay, so I use a software called ArcGIS, which is basically, geography stands for geographical information systems. So on my project, I use data and I create data and I present them on maps. So for this specific project that I entered into a competition, I go through the history of Alamo Heights in an interactive way, using maps and different pictures that we found. So there's a lot of interactability with this presentation, but it's basically just a project showing off the history of Alamo Heights, using maps and data.
Hi, I'm Kristy Chris from Cambridge Elementary. I teach fifth grade math and science. And I'm here with Ally and Maggie and we are sharing our digital breakout EDUs. In our breakout EDUs, there are, it's a series of math problems and you have to try to escape the room by solving the problems. There's a story to every break. And then it's in sequential order, so then finally you can break out all the locks. Oh, this mega math monster has taken Miss Chris's cats. The only way Miss Chris can get them back is by having her students show the mega math monster how much math they learned from this year. Can you help Miss Chris get her cat back?
Good night. My name is Señora White. I'm the assistant of Señora White, the Spanish merchant, the first grade. The project of this group is about the tigers. Pedro, Pete, and I are the ones that are in this group and they're going to explain what this project is.
How do you use those tigers' jaws? And how do you use those jaws to protect other animals? How many teeth does a tiger have? A tiger has 54 teeth, just as dogs have.
Hello, this is the forensic science class in 295B. I'm Katie Vaughn and I'm a junior.
I'm Kevin Gortola, I'm a senior.
And here today, we are solving a killer mystery. We have several subjects and suspects here and we're going to determine who did the actual killing with their fibers and hairs.
And just by, you know, looking through them at the microscope, you're going to see if maybe you can find one that's consistent with one that's found at the scene of the crime.
Okay. And then from all of that microscope analyzation, you still can't figure out who the killer is. We have our fancy lasers over here that actually determine the actual diameter of the hairs. Now, you can't just look at a hair and tell the diameter. So we have a little setup here. If you put a hair on this index part, you shine a laser on the hair and then the lasers actually come onto this clipboard and you can measure the lights from there. So it's very interesting and high-tech and cool. Yes, this is forensic science in 295B. Come by and have some fun and solve the mystery.
All right, so we're getting ready for next year. It's already been here. We did change the date a little bit. We ran right smack this year into star testing, so it was on the same day. So we talked to Krista and Asensio and we lived it a little bit. But you'll notice in there that most of those, I mean, every one of those lessons are well-designed. They're profile of the learner using blueprint. You can see that these teachers are actually doing this every day in their classrooms. These are not just for the showcase. This is going on on a regular basis here in the district. So real excited about it. I love this part of the job. I know, didn't have a lot of technology, but that, this is very near and dear to my heart. So I hope it continues and thank you so much for your support. Appreciate it.
I have to say, that was by far the best engaged learning. I, I just loved it. I stayed for longer than an hour.
Good.
Really, and I didn't even see those. I mean, there were so many to see. And I was so impressed by these students and their presentations and their enthusiasm and passion, so much so that I started dragging Kevin over to hear these girls' presentation. And they did. And Lisa. It was amazing.
And choir presented. And you had a chance to go see the choir.
Yeah. I thought the junior high choir, I thought the junior high choir was the senior high choir when I first walked in because that was so good. They were really good. I agree. And then, and then the seniors came out, seniors came out and I was like, whoa, I thought those were, that's good.
And I love the way you spread it out, pulling into the driveway and having that vibraphone player play. It just was cool. It just was neat.
Good job.
Sandra, I appreciate your work on doing this and I love the change from technology to engaged learning. I want to give props to Patty and Rosalinda for really highlighting it quite well. Rachel took a great job. And they really capture what this is all about. But y'all know that Sandra has made a certain announcement and, which makes us all very sad. But I want you to know, when Sandra came, we didn't have a five-year technology plan. We do. We didn't have one-to-one technology plan and we do. Our help desk wasn't running as efficiently as it could and it runs unbelievably well. Teachers just dial help and they get a live person and it's, it's almost real-world help when they get it. And she helped with our bond and developing all of that and, and much, much more, but she's had a stellar career and we're going to miss her here. But she's brought a whole lot to this district and we're really grateful for everything that she's done.
It's been amazing, Sandra. It's been amazing.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
Good job.
The next item is E, consideration of approval of Alamo Heights Junior School STEM Building Design. Are you all hired? Welcome.
I've been in this room a lot of time, but never in this context. It's interesting.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll just start going through stuff. If you want me to slow down, I'll slow down. And if you have questions, you know, please stop and ask. And if I'm going too fast, I'm going to that too.
Okay.
Okay? Thanks. So this is, this is the existing campus, just for perspective. I believe everybody knows orientation, where all the devoting's are and everything. Next, please. So for perspect, oh, here we go. It ought to hang right here. So this is the whole master plan for the campus, which gets us a true field track configuration, athletics, renovation of the existing campus, another athletic field. But what we're going to talk about are the, the building directly to the, the north of the But what we're going to talk about are the building directly to the north of the existing fine arts, which is the bottom left. So that's what we're going to call the first phase of this. And that's going to be the STEM building that this presentation is about. Okay? So that's, that's the new STEM building. And then the other indicators are there for orientation that everybody's confidently know where we are here. So I'm going to ask for the slide to be advanced, please.
Hang on, Lole. Does that, does it sit on the site? Is that, is it accurate where it sits?
That's not exactly accurate. That's where it was shown in the previous slide of the master plan.
Is it a little further?
It's a little further to the
That way?
East, yeah.
Yeah.
New Braunfels.
Okay.
And it's also a little, it's a little different footprint.
Yeah, it's narrower, maybe? Was it narrow?
But it's, it's not, it's not far off the location. So the nice thing about this is we're putting it where our parking lot is. So we're getting rid of the least amount of trees as possible. And you can see the clearing in front of it. So when the second phase goes, once again, we'll try to not demolish any trees. It's a little further to the music building from the Glendale up side, we're twenty-eight feet clear. And then in the master plan, the tennis courts will become another athletic field or a PE field or a rec field. So they'll have a place to go to recreate during lunch and everything else. So that's kind of defined the placement of this. And then also with the addition of that building and the new fine arts, we're going to, the campus is going to move more towards New Braunfels than kind of be spread out along the back to Nacogdoches. Okay? So we met with staff to get informed. And information is everything. We want to do that before we start our design process. So through these meetings, we had several activities. But out of that came these four guiding principles. This is also research-based, is, our team did a lot of research into STEM buildings, what we've done, what you've done, what's out there in the world in a variety of school districts. And so these are these, these four guiding principles. I'll let you, I'll let you read that. But it's, it's pretty interesting that some of the teachers came with their own images of projects. And some of the projects he brought were ours that were written up to internet, which, well, it's kind of, it's kind of a neat thing. And I guess from the standpoint that our vision is aligned. So in the, in the slide we just saw with the kids, you know, it's going to be cool and technological. Okay? Thanks. So from that, we sat and met with staff and did a process we call visual learning. So we had several panels with images. And there were probably a hundred images. And we asked them to do a red dot, green dot exercise, you know, and to tell us what's good, what's bad, and why. So the top six photos are a compilation of the best with the reasons why they liked it. And then the diagrams below, we, we cut out shapes of the spaces and had the teachers come and arrange those to get the best adjacencies. So from all those concepts came our, our simple partie to the right, which is foundation, collaboration, and innovation, which we then transferred over metaphorically to what the building is. Okay? So this, this is the building as it, as it sits on the site. So the, this is the ground floor, so the classroom's at the top of the foundation. Then there's collaboration in the middle part. And then innovation is the STEM-specific classrooms to the bottom. We've arranged the building to ensure fire access, which is a code requirement, a safety requirement, obviously. But also to create exterior spaces for the students and teachers in the building to utilize outside the four walls or ten walls or however many walls of the classroom. So we have an innovation yard and a growing grounds. And once again, you can see we're strategically inserting the building around the existing trees. And then flanking the plan or just some precedent images of what some of the pieces will look like. And we're, we're looking for more natural ways to seat and grow and move around instead of just trying to do everything man-made, in a great nature. Okay? We're also going to, going to plan around there. And as we, as we discussed, we're going to meet with maintenance to talk about the growth period of the plants and the maintenance. But all these are drought-tolerance, air-escape plants. Very colorful, though, and very lush. A lot of times, people think they're escaping, they gravitate to cacti and sage. So these are great native plants. I think a lot of us have them in our home gardens.
And I do really appreciate the detail on this front, because I know, I know we've gone over this before. But the, the idea of having an environment that kids want to be in, that's an attractive environment, got to have great-looking plants, and you really do. And as we've also discussed, we can't spend a whole lot of money on maintenance every year. And so I like the attention to detail on what's going to look good, but not cost a lot to maintain. And that, that combination to give our kids a good environment, like, this, this is in a great direction. So I just wanted to point that out.
Well, I appreciate that. And the other thing that's a bonus is a lot of these plants are attractors to hummingbirds, to bees, butterflies and everything. So that goes hand-in-hand with, you know, biology and science. Okay? So on the ground floor, we have classrooms, which are indicated by the number one. And the classrooms have the ability, as both of these show, to have a folding operable partition retracted, so they can operate as one classroom. There's a common presentation area in the middle. But in the, the folding partition in the middle can also be closed, so they can act as two separate classrooms. The partition we're going to specify is, you know, four to five inches thick. It's acoustically treated. So when closed, it'll have the same acoustic properties of a wall. But it gives us a lot of versatility. And then the rooms also set up, in the closed position, they can obviously act alone. Then down below are the two STEM labs. The classrooms, labs, storage, direct access to the outside to bring the material. They use a lot of odd-shaped materials, different types of material. Right now, Jeff Wheatcraft, Teacher of the Year, right? Is, has a full schedule of STEM. And then the other eighth-grade teacher teaches mainly science, but I think she's got one to two courses of STEM. I'm not sure. But this will allow that program to grow and accommodate all the eighth grade.
And you won't have to put all this gear in the hallway anymore?
No. No, when I first walked into his classroom
This is crazy.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's like engine, a pond with fishing in, and everything. So this, combined with the innovation yard on the outside, is really going to let a lot of, you know, incredible things happen. There's dust collection in the shops at each machine. So all the sawdust is just going to be sucked up, the collection. And you'll see in some subsequent renderings throughout the side, become part of the language of the building. We've also externally treated that a little different than the, than the science portion of the building. And you'll see that as we go to some renderings. Then the three or the entries in some, just some breakout areas for some collaboration here. We've done some unique things. You can see there's some built-in sinks, but it's not, the walls aren't lined with sinks and fixed tables. So that gives us maximum versatility for movable furniture. There's a common storage area and then just a lot of transparency in general.
And one of the things that I like, too, and you mentioned this at committee meeting, but in, in talking to the teachers, well, we don't have like hallways. We have like collaborative space. And I love the fact that every square foot is designed to educate. Because as you communicate, when you talk to the teachers, a lot of them need these long runways to run a lot of their experiments. And so we can use that collaborative space, because it's not designed just like a hallway, like it was when I was a kid.
Correct.
And it just really wouldn't facilitate that.
Yeah, so every, every part of the building is designed to be used in, not just for conveyance.
Right.
As we get, next slide, please. So that's even apparent here where the number five indicates an opening. So they're going to do drop and gravity experiments. They might drop an egg and see if they can keep it from cracking. They can, you know, find out that gravity's nine-point-eight meters per, you know, second squared, if it's still correct. More science labs upstairs, but a larger collaborative area here, which we're calling the learning commons. We're planning on very versatile furnishings in here. So you can work in small group, you can work in large group. You can push it all aside and have multidisciplinary meetings in here. The same thing with the classroom, the partitions, opening up to give you the ability to co-teach or co-share, do a bigger presentation. You might bring in speakers, you might want to talk to two classes at the same time. It's just all sorts of incredible versatility. When the walls are closed, they're going to be clad in, you know, bulletin board material or marker board material, so it becomes another learning opportunity. The wall at the, in between the interior and exterior, the learning commons, you'll see in the rendering, is marker board to give people a place to write and ideate. But it's not a permanent place. You can do it, draw it, think it, photograph it, move on. So it's someplace for everybody. So we're really excited about this, because what you do in the facilities you have now and the teachers and the students is pretty incredible. But as the facility continues to change and grow and aid in the academic approach, it just, I think it's going to exponentially, you know, grow what everybody can do here. So it's just, the trajectory's fantastic. Okay?
Well, and really quick, I like all the Engage furniture, but just being mindful that folks probably are going to listen to this later, too. And this is actually a good image for it. But we, we pressed you on, how come we don't have space on top of that front area?
Yeah.
You know, outdoor space on that second story? And so if you just like, in two seconds, like just
Sure, sure. So the STEM lab has different needs and part of that is having a different height. We even talked about putting a lightweight crane in there to be able to hoist heavier things, move around shop equipment and everything. So the floors don't line up. So if you go to the next slide, you can see where the line of the floor is relative to the height of the science. Where it says science, that's the STEM lab. So they don't align. Which is, is good and bad, but I think it's better for the STEM, because you're going to have a lot of other activities that can happen in there. And then we have a lot of transparency. We're using the elevator shaft, we're picking up some of the blue from the campus, the entry in the, the fine arts building. And then you can see the blue vertical at the front of the STEM building. That's the dust collection. Simple palette of materials. We're also planning on color coding the structure. So people in exposing the structure, so it's, it's pretty self-evident how the building's structured to start to kind of formulate that, because, you know, you want more architects and engineers in the world. Okay?
Well, is there any natural light in the STEM portion? Are there any windows into that STEM piece?
No. Well, the, the door, the garage door, we're thinking a lot of times it may just be open.
Okay.
But we don't have windows in there right now. And that's, part of that's for acoustics and what's going on in there. It's something we could, we could talk about looking at, but they need a lot of wall space to mount stuff and equipment. But we could still put higher glass if we had to. Okay? And that's, that's, that's what it looks like from the southeast.
I would, I would like to make sure that any time we use an accent color, like the blue, that it like matches. Because I remember when I was a kid or in high school or whatever, and we had people saying, "We're royal blue." And other people saying, "We're navy blue." And then, "What shade of blue?" And it was just a train wreck. And we've since gone past that.
We went to Notre Dame for a while.
I know. It was just, we lost our color palette. But just making sure that the palette is indicative of the, you know, colors you put on our kids' uniforms and that kind of thing.
Yeah, so we can absolutely color match all that.
Yeah.
Now, the, the glass bonded here is underneath that porch. So there's like a little storefront in the door and everything there. Okay?
Is that good enough?
I was just curious.
Yeah, and you can, you can see it there.
So the garage doors are transparent when they're closed? Okay.
Yeah, so they can see outside.
Okay.
And then you can see the dust collection system and then some of the site furnishings. And this is indicated as a, a long block, but we're going to segment it so it, to discourage railslides.
Oh, the lawn stone blocks right there?
Yeah, yeah, from skateboarders.
Good catch.
And then just
We'll be submitting little blocks on top and bring that up.
So these are just some more exterior views, looking from the fine arts here, through the building. It's very, it's a very simple building. This is the backside. So the, the windows, the sill height of the windows is very high up. So they won't, nobody will be looking directly into the backyard of the neighbors. But we'll take advantage of the north light coming into the building. And this is a much simpler palette on the back. So as we did at the high school, we've taken the Profile of the Learner and taken keywords out of that and then associated it with nature and then derived our color palette from this and kind of keep that theme throughout the district. Pretty cool. Okay? And then this is just some imagery of our, of our color palette and selections we're using on the interior. This is the science classroom downstairs, and you can see the according wall retracted. Okay?
And wait, go back real quick, Emma. And so I know you've got kind of the, just exemplary furniture in there. But I mean, that's really going to align with our Engage Learning furniture that we're installing everywhere else.
Absolutely. And this is the STEM lab.
Okay.
There's a lot of light, yeah.
Y'all know this, but one of the other things that we're really trying to focus on is all of our signage everywhere. So that we have a brand and a feel and a consistency on each campus and all. We're working on that and really just taking an inventory of what the signs look like right now and make sure even when you go to a campus, you know where to go. Is it obvious where you go? We have a lot of outdated signs. We've been here a long time. And just trying to clean all of that up as we can, but do that all in one big kind of fail-sleep time, so that we can order them. And then have a palette already set aside, so that when people need additional signs, we're not taking a piece of eight and a half by eleven on the door, but that we have something that just looks a little nicer and can have less tape everywhere and just a little more professional feel to it.
So how are you going about doing that branding now? Like the fonts, so that they're all consistent? So it's not like
Well, right now, we just know we want to do it.
Okay.
And so Mike has some ideas and it's going to be working with a sign company to actually get the, we'll have our logo on there and that kind of thing. And maybe have three or four different optional pieces, depending on what the functionality of the sign is. But we still have a little time to go on those. But he's been working with the system principals to get kind of an inventory of what they have to begin with. But yeah, you'd be surprised, you walk around and go, uh, wow. We don't even have homemaking anymore. You know, we have a sign or whatever.
You don't see them after a while.
Yeah, you know.
Totally. Like stop signs.
Quick question. What is the, what's the purpose of the drop ceiling?
That's the collaboration lab upstairs, coming over into the space. So go to the next slide. I believe there's a section. This is, we'll get to it.
It's your second floor.
This is the collab upstairs, showing some of the furnishings in the marker board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
I mean, that's a hallway, and I love that that hallway is made for education.
So this is, I don't have a pointer, but you can see how the second floor comes in. So that's the lower part.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense. So realistically, it's not, it's not going to be halfway across the room?
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, it, it runs along the length but along the wall. But that also gives us interstitial space to run ductwork and air conditioning and everything else that go into the room to maintain the height.
I don't want it to get in the way of the crane.
Oh.
Right.
And that's, we just have to, that might be something we put the structure for and it comes later.
And Emma, you don't need to switch the slides, but so in the STEM rooms, you had a lot of like that vanilla wood paneling or whatever it is on the wall? I mean, is that stuff pretty sturdy? They're going to be swinging around machinery and that kind of thing.
It's, yeah, it's plywood. I mean, it's going to get scratched.
It's just basically made to get banged up a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's, you know, it's going to be a STEM lab. It's going to have some, a little bit of grit to it.
Right.
So, so you are, it's like you're specifying plywood?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not like some mahogany or something.
Well, or some like laminated, you know.
Yeah, no, it's, it's wood. And also from a maintainable standpoint, just pull it off and
And just put this stuff on.
But when you, you can attach things to it, you can hang stuff to it. It just, it's, you know, every surface is something that you can
That you can use. That makes sense. Haven't thought about it.
I believe that's it. Anyways, thanks.
Excellent.
Well, and I, I kind of like this falling on from Sandra's presentation because as we're re-contemplating like our campuses and how we educate our kids, like an exciting place to go. I mean, that's going to create an engaged environment. And I remember when I was a kid, half the classrooms I hated to go to, but I loved going to the chemistry lab, not because it was an easy class, it was the hardest class I had. It was pure, it killed me, but it had this cool stuff in there, and so you got to go in there and mess with stuff.
Do things.
Yeah, it was different, so you liked going in there. So I appreciate that with this building. I'm going to be interested to see how we look at some other more traditional, you know, quote-unquote buildings, you know, if it's a math classroom and that kind of thing, and how we perpetuate this, this idea, but I certainly like it with this STEM building.
Thanks.
I think it's going to be transformational for the campus, really.
Oh, yeah.
Program, it's going to be amazing. I really feel like this building, Cambridge and the Commons are all just kind of knocked the socks off. There's going to be pretty neat things, I think.
Yep. Good.
Okay, if there are no other questions, or have a motion to approve the Alma Heights Independent STEM Building Design is presented?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really good.
Thanks, Lo.
Great job. And thanks for taking so much collaboration with our teachers.
No kidding.
They really appreciate the input.
It makes the best project and I, you know...
It's good design.
We don't want to pretend we know how to teach or we know better than teachers, and what we do is facilitate the design that makes them do their job, allows them to do their job better. So this is, this is the best world where we have engaged teachers and we have a district that allows that engagement because a lot of districts don't. And I, I think the results are going to be fantastic, and I just want to recognize, you know Sarah, but stronger, I'm going to recognize her because I'm just here talking.
Because she really does all the work.
She does all the work. She's backed up by a huge team that does it.
I'm going to speak, Sarah, I'm going to give you a compliment again, but I had to meet with someone on the City Council of Alma Heights, and so they mentioned the hearing that we had on Cambridge, and said that Sarah had every single answer they needed, presented really well, represented the district well, and affirmed. And so I do appreciate that, so thank you.
Yeah, good job, Sarah.
Great job.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Central plant looks good too, by the way. It's going anywhere.
Next item, Section 5 Consent Agenda. These are items that are considered routine by the Board of Trustees and have been, or have been viewed in prior meetings. As you guys look over the list to see if there's anything you want to pull out, just want to note, we received over $20,000 in donations for which we're very grateful. I don't know if they, I can't recall if we're going to pull up the DEAC meeting or not with someone...
Anybody have anything to report?
Okay.
DEAC?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, if I've no questions on the consent agenda, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sub move.
Second?
Got it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Next up are the Board Members Committee reports, the Alma Heights School Foundation.
Yep, and they met yesterday, or we met yesterday, I should say, and had a first, I guess this was the first meeting with Heather there. I mean, as, as, in her role, in her new role as the executive director, and it was a really good meeting. So they are still down on, on funding, but working on it, and they are going to have a calling party on May 1st to try to reach out to people that haven't given yet. They set the date for Greater Heights Night for next year, November 14th, if y'all want to mark your calendars for that. And as you know, they've, they've had this task force that they've been kind of looking at how they're going to brand themselves, and they, so they gave a little presentation on that. I mean, just know that they're looking at trying to, they're trying to put themselves under a single umbrella really in terms of how they, how they give out their money, and right now they're talking about teachers and supporting teachers. Heather gave, well, and they approved the, they're going to be the holding, hold fund for the incubator program, that, that did get approved. They, but Heather's already talking a lot about streamlining processes and minimizing paperwork, leveraging online forums so that the people that are filling out stuff do more of the work, so, you know, and cleaning up the software and the database. So she's sounding really impressive, and she's made a huge impact in three, three weeks, I think.
That's a pressure.
Uh-huh.
She's been great.
I think we're really going to see some improvement in terms of just, I think we've had all this data, but we haven't been managing it probably or didn't know how to get it out of there, and we're figuring out how to do that and upgrading it. Sounds like she wants to maybe improve that, move on to like the online version or something like that. So anyway, there is a great meeting. They're looking good.
Great. Next up is the update from the Building Committee. We met on April 11th. David?
Right, so, you know, I guess in the past however many years, we haven't had too many Building Committee meetings because it's mostly just maintenance, and so now we're going to have regular meetings. We're going to meet the first Wednesday of every month, and so that's going to be part of it. We're going to review any sort of design bids or anything else that's essentially ready for board review, and so we'll take it and give it a good once-over and push things back and forth as needed. I can't recall, but I think the, some bid, was it the Commons bid? I can't remember. Was either up today or tomorrow. Kevin, do you recall?
I don't.
Commons today, okay. And so we'll get to look at that at the, at the next committee meeting. The other thing that we're going to do too is, you know, the only thing we've had in progress right now is really mostly design and the plant. And by the way, Kevin, I haven't seen the plant because I stopped going down that street when they started work on it, and so now I don't even go down anymore.
You do?
But now we'll be able to, we're going to track all the progress and show everybody at the, at the full board meeting so we can see what, what is in design stage, what is in bid stage, how far along each project we are and that kind of thing. And we're going to leverage information from JORIS and also from LPA because they have that software and they're already putting all that together. And so now we can have it up here at the board level two and stay on top of all this stuff, so lots more to come, but the first meeting will be, or the second meeting, I guess will be a couple weeks?
Okay, next item up is Item 7, Business Recommendations. Mike?
I'll let you do it.
Dwayne, clarity, do I need to, I know we're going to read officially the motion brief as legal language, but for these, do I need to read these off the agendas you're presenting?
I think if you just refer to the agenda, item number, that's...
Okay, Item A has presented an agenda. The reason for anybody listening is it's incredibly long legal agenda items, but Dwayne will describe it, so.
That's a paragraph. Thank you. Good to be here with you again tonight. Got a lot of exciting things going on. The first item, Item 7A, is a consideration of approval for the authorization of the Series 2018A bonds. And as we discussed in the previous committee meeting, we're looking at selling the next installment from the authorization the voters approved last year. This total amount between the two series that we're talking, selling is $100 million. And again, it's contemplated, the first Series 2018A will be the traditional fixed-rate issue that we would go forward with and sell in a normal fashion. The seven series, I'm sorry, Item 7B, I guess it'd be better just to do all this together and get it all done. Item 7B is Series 2018B, which is the shorter-term items that are, that the district is covering to be paid back within seven years, and we're doing that $12 million and planning to do that with the short-term issuance, the variable rate issuance. So that's Series B. And those two together, what you're doing is called a delegation or parameter approval or authority tonight, which approves the issuance of the bond subject to final approval, which should be delegated to Superintendent, Word President, Business Manager. And those final terms would be the final maturities and interest rates and things that are negotiated on the sale of those bonds. So you're authorizing the issuance, and then that gives us the flexibility to go and price and get all that done at a flexible, appropriate time. Then the series, I'm sorry, I get mixed up between item numbers and series numbers because they're the same. Item 7C is a refunding of the outstanding issue that is small, it's $1,670,000, that has some savings on it. It was an issue that was not permanent school fund guaranteed because they were out of capacity at the time. It has to be done separately. If there were a PSF guaranteed issue, we could have combined that with the other issue and done it together and not had to separate it. But in this case, we have to separate it because it can't be PSF guaranteed, and we would look to do that. Again, it's a parameter or delegated authorization, and that with a small amount and a short amortization, probably going to do that through a private placement offering. It would be competitive, but a private placement. So happy to answer any questions you have.
Sure. I mean, you took us through a great amount of detail in the last meeting, so I appreciate that, but just between now and last week, when you did, has there been any major changes in market conditions, anything in the terms or...
No, you know, the marks have been volatile up and down, but I mean, it's kind of been the way it is these days. But no, on the municipal side, we're still seeing, we don't have any major changes in our projection as far as interest rates, short-term or long-term at this point in time. And we would anticipate being able to get these issued before mid-May, and so we'll get everything locked in fairly shortly.
So a couple of things, I know that, you know, the reason to split up, you know, A and B on the agenda item was essentially to take care of some practical impact from the tax law changes that came through.
Correct.
So I appreciate you guys being ahead of that and helping us stay in front of it. And I know that we walked through the cost savings that we'll get in managing it this way too, even, even over and above issuance fees and that sort of thing, so I appreciate that.
Correct.
On the bonds that we're issuing, so two questions that I wanted to just reiterate, but number one, the bonds we're issuing here, we are going to get PSF behind it or guaranteed.
The new, the two new series will be PSF guaranteed.
Right, the two new ones, right.
Yes, we are, we actually already have the preliminary approval letter from DEA for that approval.
Okay. And then, second question, you know, we add all this debt essentially to our balance sheet, how do you see that impacting our rating going forward? Because, you know, we, you know, later down the road, we'll want to do another issuance or want to refund or something like that.
Right. I think right now, this is expected. When we did the first installment of the $15 million last year and talked to the rating agencies, they knew what your total authorization was from the voters. We explained what the plan was to issue, so this is not a surprise to them. So certainly, this is a large amount of debt for Alma Heights ISD, this whole authorization, and that'll be considered and be affected going forward, but with the current plans, I don't think that will be, because you'll be paying off with this amount, I mean, we're going to be paying some off as we go through, and your tax rate is still very low from the INS side purposes, and the debt ratio, which is commonly looked at, the amount of debt, the par amount of debt versus your taxable assessed valuation is still very reasonable. So I don't see any major impact from that.
Okay. You have any other questions or discussion?
Well, I did, I thought this might be a good timing, and I don't remember the number, and I don't know, Mike, if you want to shout it out, but I feel like it's always good to get into this, you know, I got my property taxable in the mail, and that's always a whole lot of fun. So I'm, Mike, I'm assuming since I'm paying more in property taxes, that Alma Heights Independent School District is going to get a lot more money from the property taxes, right?
Well, the state will get more money from our property taxes.
And so for clarification, in this biennium, for example...
Right.
Our taxpayers paid $6 million more in taxes for maintenance and operations side, and we kept almost $0.
And that's really what I wanted to highlight.
Right. So our Robin Hood payment will go up to about $42 million, Mike, and, which is more than half of our local revenue. I think we're at 53% right now, ballpark of local revenue that's going out. So when your property value goes up on the M&amp;O side, that's our maintenance and operations, that's all going to the state. We're not keeping that unless they change legislation in the next session, which they did not do in the last session. So, you know, the, even the Legislative Budget Board had a big goose egg zero for Alma Heights getting additional revenue during this biennium. On the, on the bond side, your tax rate is going to go up a little bit, and that's what we presented to the community.
Right.
And that'll go up to about 19 and a half cents, which will still be, if not the lowest rate in the county, it'll be, I think it is the lowest rate, even with that, it's close.
It's, maybe if it's not, it's the next to lowest.
Yeah, so it's either the lowest or next to lowest, but it's a very low tax rate. But that's a short-term rate, and it'll continue, it'll decline over time as property values catch up. And so that's something to be known. And the other thing is, just if anybody's listening, is to remember that on the bond side, if you're 65 or over, your primary homestead is exempted from tax increases, and so it does not affect you. You don't get property value increase or tax increases. The other thing to remember also is that every penny of a bond stays in Alma Heights. There is no recapture from that. And so as opposed to maintenance and operations where you're losing 53%. So one of the things that Mike has done really, really well over the years is try to find things that we can pay for out of bond, where you're not losing any tax revenue, you can keep that. So for instance, our solar project, where we went out and bought solar panels and we covered our schools with them, we could do that out of bond. They, we sell that electricity to CBS Energy, they give us revenue, but that revenue goes into your maintenance and operations fund. Same with your utilities, right? You have water, we've done low-flow water, we've done, replaced all our windows and lights, but we did that out of bond, and that, but it saves your energy costs, which you're out of maintenance and operations. So it's like two for one, right? Today, you're selling bonds on short-term, seven years, to be able to pay for technology because a computer out of bond, $1,000 computer costs, taxpayers $1,000, plus a very low interest rate, as opposed to it would cost over $2,000 in tax revenue to pay for a $1,000 computer because of the maintenance and operations side. So y'all have been really smart about keeping your, your, trying to maximize bonds when possible because all of that money stays in the district and offset all of the low amounts of money we've had on maintenance and operations, as well as just that huge impact for everything that you have with Robin Hood, taking more than half of the money to the state.
And I think since this is on the record, that you guarantee in your next role, you're going to fix all that for all the school districts? Like guarantee?
I guarantee it.
Because it's on the record.
I'm going to work hard at it. That's for sure. I have lived it. I know how hard it is.
Okay. All that you want to do?
Okay, I move that the Board of Trustees adopt an order authorizing the issuance of Alma Heights Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds Series 2018A pursuant to a delegated sale.
Do you have a second?
It's actually...
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
I move that the Board of Trustees adopt an order authorizing the issuance of Alma Heights Independent School District Variable Rate Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds Series 2018B pursuant to a delegated sale.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
I move that the Board of Trustees adopt an order authorizing the issuance of Alma Heights Independent School District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds Series 2018C pursuant to a delegated sale.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oppose, motion carries?
And I did, I did forget about the language, but I do think it's worth saying, it says unlimited in the motion, but we're not, you know, we're going after what was approved, but we're not going after unlimited amount of money.
Okay, next item, Section Eight, so.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Thanks, Wayne.
And your really long tenure of, of helping support this district and other schools, yeah, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Get us a good rate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next up, Superintendent's Communication.
I'll just be real quick and tell y'all, y'all know all about the incubator program, but, uh, both Paloma Blanca and Henry Sauer hosted a reception. Richard Peacock over at Paloma Blanca, and Patrice Bartlett and Kathy Klump, who are teachers, are, were really excited, had a good showing of people that were there, and they have received a number of donations in the, above six figures, uh, so far, which is really outstanding, and we're excited about that. The other thing I want you to know is that, as Bonnie mentioned, the foundation has agreed to take this over as a, as it'll be a named fund. And it will be a much easier fund to manage than what has been in the past, where they're not gonna spend time on allocations, basically, they're gonna spend time on fundraising. And they're going to make this easier, 'cause one of the things we need with the incubator program is we need easy access, and one of the reasons we need the foundation involved is, is as kids do their minimum viable product, as well as when they do their pitch at the end, they're gonna need to get money. And it's, it's, it's not easy for a school district to give a student money, 'cause that can be construed as a gift, whereas this is, that's exactly what these donations are for, and so they can go through the foundation. But when the teachers are gonna need five thousand dollars for such-and-such, they don't have to go through a lengthy allocation process for the incubator program. They'll be able to walk down and solicit that fund from, you know, ask for that money, and then we'll be able to manage that on our end, as well as on their end. And so I think that's a real positive development with the foundation and this particular program. That's it.
Great. Just go to calendar review?
Calendar review. You know, I gave up, I, all, here's what I'm gonna tell you, there's a lot going on. So look at your calendars. Y'all know, I'm just gonna point out a very few things, because there's so much on there, but on April twentieth, just a reminder, Friday, four thirty to six is the Trinity Prize, uh, reception. It's always neat, and they have the National Teacher of the Year speak, and Jeff Wiegecraft is our candidate on there. And Monday, the twenty-third, is the District Strings Festival. I just wanna point out, it's at Blossom this year, not at Freeman. So if you show up at Freeman, it's empty, and you're like, wow, we didn't get a good showing, that's 'cause it's a blossom.
There's also the River Parade, so if you go downtown, you're gonna be real sad.
Oh, good point.
Yeah.
So go to Blossom.
Yeah, try to get downtown.
And then, I just wanna point out, there's a Robins graduation, May fourth, um, at noon. There's a mentor appreciation on May first at six PM, I believe that's here. And then, John and Margaret, y'all are with me on May seventh for lunch. GMP on May ninth, with the Building Committee that morning as well, and obviously the Building Committee the week before.
On May second, right.
May second, thank you. And then, y'all know, we have our Celebration of Excellence on May eighth, that's at Paloma Blanca as well. This is about our fifth or sixth annual Celebration of Excellence, and, uh, all of y'all are invited to attend that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're really fast, it came May eighth?
There it is, there it is.
It's May eighth, okay.
And that really is a fun deal, to highlight our educators and point out what they're doing, and celebrate them a little bit, so.
It is. And it's a very efficient, you know, it's, it's, it's more about the fellowship and honoring than it is about a lengthy program.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, May sixteenth is Robins graduation, another one. And then I'll just end with May seventeenth, which will be our regular board meeting, and we'll be back in here again, 'cause we have a ton of recognitions.
It'll be at the high school.
Oh. It'll be at the high school, in the foyer?
Yes.
In the foyer.
And can we, can I just have a, make sure, Frank, at that meeting, will you make sure and ask people to stay, when there's that many people here? I, I felt bad that everyone started getting up and making a lot of noise when the swimmers were up here, and I like it when you do that, and ask them to stay through the thing. I mean, that's just, all the cheerleaders didn't stay and cheer, you know? But they were loud on the way out.
I think we, the basketball team got us off to a bad start.
I know, that was different, so, yeah, I think that's right.
Uh, y'all know, May thirty-first, we'll do senior exit interviews, I have it at eleven forty-five to twelve forty-five.
That's on the thirty-first?
The thirty-first. We'll be in our boardroom on that day. We'll, we'll get every such-and-such class ranked to come and do exit interviews, and then that night'll be graduation at seven thirty. And we are trying to get a board picture that evening, so Patty will send out something for you, so that you have that information, or Emma will.
I think she's trying to do it at the May board.
At the May board meeting.
Because he has the graduate.
Yeah, Mark Humphries has a graduate himself, and, so we may do it at the May board meeting, okay.
But we'll send something out. Did, did, did I hear you say eleven forty-five to twelve forty-five for the, for the graduate?
Senior exit interviews?
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
What?
Just a little different timing.
Oh, yes. Just another thing to keep in mind as we head into graduation, I know our board president is the one that hands out diplomas, and, uh, but you also, sometimes y'all have people that you want. You wanna make sure that you get the board president, if you're gonna intervene, just give them a heads up what that's gonna be, 'cause we do allow you, if there's a relative or whatever, or a very, very, very special friend of the family or whatever, you can do that.
Does it have to be a very, very, very special?
Very.
It's gonna be three rings.
Three rings.
You're gonna have to cultivate it, man.
And that's, that's, that's all I got.
In an inappropriate way.
Oh, Mike, sorry, yes.
We took bids today on the Commons Building?
And they're still working on the numbers. However, the steel manufacturer has guaranteed his prices for only fifteen days, the low bidder. So if it all works out, we need to accept the bids, the board will have to accept the bids by the fourth of May, will be our timeline, so we'd have to have a special call meeting.
Okay. Okay.
If that's okay.
So let's, let's do that while we're here.
Pick a date.
Figure out a date. Mike, do you have a suggestion for us?
I would say either the third or the fourth, or we could do it on the second.
You know, we got a few folks here that, if it's a short meeting, we could do seven o'clock, with everybody do that, and then, uh, as a special call, and then the Building Committee could just stick around.
Well, I know the.
We're gonna wanna take a look at it first.
First.
Uh-huh.
Okay, that's right.
So we, we just might be flexible with our date.
Maybe, oh, I'm not a ten.
Are you guys meeting the second?
I'm out the fourth.
Do I do it the third, 'cause you're meeting the second?
Yeah, I mean, that would.
I'm not here, but that's it.
I could do an early one on the third.
How early?
So, you tell me what you need.
Seven, you wanna do that?
Do a seven AM on the third, but Kevin, you're not here.
I'm not, I can call in.
If you're gonna be here on the second.
You'll know.
At that meeting, you'll see, we'll have the numbers for that.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we're, it's the third, then?
Third, at seven AM.
Seven AM.
And that's Cambridge, Mike?
No, that's Commons.
Commons.
Sorry. Okay?
Okay, great.
Seven AM?
And for now, we'll just keep Building Committee on the second at seven AM. Is that all right? Is that, y'all, we can move it later if you want, but we'll just.
Sounds good. Okay, there's no objections, we're going to, before getting to the next item, we're gonna move into executive, take the short break and then move into executive session. For Texas Government Code, Section Five, by one.
I would either have to do it twenty, next month.